It being somewhat past 2:00, we're now back in session from our recess. And we are going to start with Article VI, which is our capital budget. Just a couple of procedural notes before we start, and that will be that Article VI, which is on pages 26 through 28 of the warrant, will be divided into separate motions. However, unlike the operating budget, every time we take a vote, that will be the one and final vote. If we wish to go back and revisit any of those items, the issues around reconsideration will hold true. Yep, that having been said, Mrs. Sullivan, may we have the very first motion under Article VI?
General Fund Capital Budget. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $664,497 as the general fund capital budget of the town for the purposes and in the amounts specified as follows. And to meet said appropriation, raise and appropriate the sum of $75,000 and transfer $589,497, of which $465,704 shall come from free cash, $31,000 shall come from the overlay surplus fund, $47,793 shall come from Waterway's Improvement Receipts Fund, and $45,000 shall come from the sale of lots and graves to be expended under the direction of the town manager.
Second.
Information Systems Department, 1. Upgrade vision cam license, $31,000. 2. Digital photogrammatic, whatever, $22,700. Conservation, number 3. Lower Chandler Mill Pond weed treatment, $17,500. Public Safety. Police Department. Expand station parking lot, $85,000. Fire Department. Replace 2010 command car #2 for $52,843. Line 7 Purchase. Hydraulic combination tools, 2, $25,900. Harbor Master. Line 8. Update Marine Unit 1 outboard engines, 2, $47,793. Public Works. Lands and Natural Resources Department. Line #9. Replace 2011 pickup truck L-30, $40,000. Line 10. Replace 2007 Skag 61-inch mower, $16,000. Vehicle Maintenance Department. Line 11. Replace drive-on vehicle lift, $16,180. Highway Department. Line 12. Replace 2004 Chevy 3500 pickup truck H-11, $82,653. Line 13. Replace 2006 Chevrolet Silverado pickup truck H-26, $40,0110. Line 14. Replace 2011 Chevrolet Silverado pickup truck H-20, $36,618. Transfer Station. Line 15. Replace 2005 Steco ejector trailer #2, $88,200. Cemetery Department. Line 16. Master Plan, $45,000. Department of Public Works total, $364,761. Library and Recreation. Recreation Department. Replace Alden Street Tennis Court fencing, $17,000, and total $17,000.
There being no hold.
General Fund total, $664,497.
Having heard no holds, I think we'll call this for a vote.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I do apologize. Maybe a little anxious. We have Mr. Chin from the Fiscal Advisory Committee to make a recommendation.
Hi, I'm Alex Chin from Fiscal Advisory. I wanted to, first of all, thank John Madden for his service. You have been a huge help to our committee over the years, answered all of my insane questions, and I really appreciate your help. To John Adams, I apologize in advance for all the insane questions that you will now get. I have a very brief presentation to go through today on how we decide on capital throughout the year. It's about 300 slides. It should take us no more than four or five hours. It'll be fine. So, all kidding aside, you know, we have a very dedicated committee that looks at capital and financial planning throughout the year, a number of dedicated individuals who are sitting here to my right, who spend a lot of time on this. Couple of slides. This is our agenda. Our capital, we're going to go through what the committee does, the capital budget process, decision-making process, the fiscal '19 budget, what keeps us up at night, and an example of the cost of debt, and some of our recommendations going forward. Who we are. We are nine members appointed by the town moderator. We advise the selectman, town manager, finance director, FinCom, and town meeting on strategic planning and long-range financial management. We make recommendations with regard to overall financial management, including capital expenditures and use of borrowed funds. Essentially, we approve everything in Article VI. The capital budgeting process sort of goes like this. All departments bring their budget to the Fiscal Advisory. Our goal is to prioritize those and make recommendations to town meeting. We have about $1 million every year to work with, and that's without borrowing any money. The fact that we didn't approve something doesn't mean that it's not important. A number of things come back year after year. And in addition, every year, there will be new, important requests that come forward every year. Things that go into our decision-making process. Do we have enough money to pay for it? Is sort of number one. How do the requests fit into the long-term plans with regard to overall financial planning? Will we have adequate future revenues to meet known future needs? And how can the town prepare for the unknowns? One thing we like to look at is what is the current debt situation for the town? If you can see, I think I have a little laser pointer here. But the annual debt service next year will be just under $8 million. And, you know, decreasing, that's assuming no new debt, will decrease over the next five years. But, you know, currently, we have about $63 million in annual debt service. It's about $45 million in principal and close to $18 million in interest that we have to pay. What is the impact of this on your taxes? These tax rate calculations are, for examples, they're close, they're not perfect, they have a lot of assumptions built into them, but essentially, about 16% of your taxes go to paying down debt. We look at what debt is rolling off in the next five years. There's three or four items that'll be rolling off in the next five years, and they add up to about $800,000 in annual debt service. Another thing we look at when we're going through and deciding how to prioritize things are how are we taking care of our buildings? You know, the town meeting a number of years ago made a wise decision in appointing a facilities director. Brian has done a wonderful job looking after our 63 buildings, which include 20 pumphouses. He laid out a great 10-year program to make sure these buildings are maintained. He has an operating budget around $330,000, and then comes to our committee looking for around $300,000 every year. You know, he has, so far, has done a great job utilizing that money and maintaining our buildings. So on to the '19 budget. The Water Enterprise Fund request totaled $404,500. Fiscal Advisory approved $300,000. The two projects we approved were annual system rehabilitation, $150,000, and the PCE main replacement for $115,000. Those will be funded from retained earnings. The Fiscal Advisory approval is $38,500 less than the town meeting and FinCom recommendations that were in the motion. The two items that Fiscal Advisory did not approve were an air compressor for $20,000 and a mobile vacuum system for $18,500. The other projects that Fiscal Advisory approved, the other requests that came before Fiscal Advisory totaled about $2.2 million. Fiscal Advisory approved $1.3 million of those requests to be funded from free cash, Waterway Improvement Fund, sales of lots and graves, Overland Reserve Fund, in part to be raised as part of the tax levy. There was one item that was different from the recommendation in the motion, $17,125. It related to a wireless access point for this building. Other things that the Fiscal Advisory opined on that are presented in the warrant this year were, one, during the special, Article IV, the Harbor Masters pickup truck. During the annual town meeting, we opined on Article VII, Capital Light, $111,000. Article 17, the senior center expansion. Article 19, the Information Steering Committee, and the CPC articles 34, 35, 42, and 43. We're happy to comment on those when those articles come before town meeting, but I will sort of pass over them for now. What keeps us up at night? This is sort of the big unknown for our group and why we have tried to think about how the town spends its money. There's a wonderful presentation this morning on the DPW facility that is a much-needed building in this town. The feasibility study's in process, and we're not sure how much that is going to cost, and most likely would have to be financed by debt. As everyone is well aware, we had some huge issues with the seawall this year. That's another big unknown expense that could potentially be incurred by the town. You know, luckily, we have come to some conclusions on Powder Point Bridge repairs. There were some very large numbers thrown out previously around potentially replacing a bridge, but, you know, we hope that, you know, $4.5 to $5 million could be spent to repair this bridge. Other things that we sort of think about is there are areas in town that are not currently on the town water main, and if that is a priority for the town, that comes at a cost. Refurbishing a turf field is about $600,000. And then, the Harbor Masters headquarters is another potential building replacement. And then there is always the unknown. Things come up that we weren't thinking about, sort of like the seawall did last week. This is just an example of what $20 million in borrowing would look like for the town if we borrowed, you know, $20 million for 20 years at a 4% interest rate. It would increase the tax rate by about 40 cents in the first year of debt service. The effect on the median home would be about $227, and the effect on the average home would be about $277,000, but $277. The impact of this debt on the tax rate would decrease over the remaining 19 annual payments, purely based on how the town pays back its debt. And so, you can sort of see this example of, you know, the debt service and the interest, how the interest reduces over time. Some of the recommendations we have going forward are to potentially study how the town could raise continuous income through things other than taxes, ensure there are processes in place so that the town has long-term budgeting in mind across all departments, and conduct studies on how to keep our senior citizens here in town. Thank you very much.
Okay. I was gonna say, I think we're ready for a vote. I talked to the technical people a little while ago, and they suggested that if you're looking at your voting device and it's entirely blank on the top, it may be because it's put itself to sleep for lack of use, or you took it far enough away from here, maybe with you at lunch. So if you just put, as you look at it, the bottom right-hand corner has an on/off button. If you just push that power button once, it should reactivate it. It'll wake it up if it happened to go to sleep. Okay? So, first motion in Article VI in front of you. We're gonna call for a vote now. All those in favor of spending the money, press 1. Voting is closed, and it passes 262 to 19. Second motion under Article VI, General Fund School Budget.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of $635,420 as the general fund school capital budget for the purposes and in the amounts specified below. And to meet said appropriation, raise and appropriate the sum of $75,000 and transfer $560,420 from free cash to be expended under the direction of the school committee.
Second.
Schools. Line 4. Facilities Management. Alden School Windows Project, $490,000. Line 18. Replace lockers with cubbies. Chandler School, $50,000. 19. Add wireless access points in the PAC, $17,125. Replace PAC projector, $31,295. Replace backup and recovery equipment Phase 1 of 2, $47,000, for a total of $635,420.
Second. Having heard no holds placed, and not seeing anybody lined up for any questions, I'm gonna call for a vote at this point in time. We now can vote. Voting is closed, and it passes 276 to 26. Maybe we have a motion for motion number 3, please.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of $338,500 as the Water Enterprise Fund capital budget for the purposes and in the amounts specified below. And to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of $338,500 from the Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings to be expended under the direction of the town manager.
Second.
Line 22. Purchase air compressor, $20,000. Line, pardon me? Oh, hold, sorry. Thank you. Line 23. Purchase mobile vacuum system. Line 24. System rehabilitation, $150. Line 25. PCE main pipe replacement program, $150, for a total of $338,500.
We'll go back to the holds.
I'm Candace Martin from the Fiscal Advisory Committee, and just wanted to explain why we did not support the two projects for the air compressor and the vacuum pump. The air compressor, right now, they borrow the highway department about six times a year. They use that for project work. Once a year, they go to use it, and it's not available. The other, the vacuum pump, is, right now, they use a hand tool, and this would be more efficient to use. When we evaluate a project, we do not look at just the initial capital investment, we look at the ongoing operation and maintenance. And these two projects involve equipment that needs to be stored inside. Earlier, we heard about the DPW and the lack of space that they have. Purchasing this equipment would displace trucks that are stored inside. We feel it's best, while the projects have merit, that it's prudent to wait and purchase this equipment. They have something that works now, and we feel that they should wait.
On these two items, we evaluated in terms of recommendation from the supervisor for these departments that they had requested that they would like to have access to this type of equipment in emergency. They had, I think, John, correct me, $2 million in retained earnings, and therefore, it was not going to overburden their ability to purchase these items. And we felt that they had made a compelling argument that the need for these items on an immediate basis was something that would be a public safety issue at times, so we
Any further discussions or questions? Hearing none, then we'll vote on the motion as presented. Voting is now open. If you're in favor of it, press 1. Voting is closed, and it passes 215 to 101. Article number 7, the items that Mr. Chin described as Capital Light.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of $62,867 as the small equipment and minor services budget for the purposes and in the amounts specified below. And to meet said appropriation, raise and appropriate the sum of $62,867 to be expended under the direction of the town manager.
Second.
Fire Department. 1. Purchase ballistic vests, 6, $9,000. 2. Purchase ballistic helmets, 6, $3420. 3. Replace firefighting boat pump, $3,915. 4. Purchase firefighting skid unit for UTV, $8,150. Harbor Master, 5. Replace town tender. Which one, please? Tender, sure. Public Works. Central Building Services. Irrigation Well, Town Hall, $6,200. Lands and Natural Resources. Purchase stand-up leaf blower, $12,000. Cemetery. Replace 2006 self-contained leaf vac. Did we do, did we didn't recommend? I thought we did.
I thought we did.
We thought we did. Why is that not on there?
I missed it.
Okay, $10,517. We did recommend it on Finance Committee.
So that's line item number 8.
Line item number 8 for the leaf vac, it's just blank, it's just a typo. And in the papers that I'm looking at, I don't know if it's blank in what you're looking at in there. No, is it okay in the warrant? Okay, great. Thank you. Library and Recreation. Library. Line 9. Railings for campus entrance, $1,900. Line 10. Reupholster chairs in the Lammon Study Room, 10, $3,020. Reupholster couch in the youth area, $1,450. Library and Recreation total, $6,370, for a total of $62,867. Replace town tender. Rainey, did you want to speak to that? Do you want the tender? Is the one that...
Yes, we had a question on line item number 5, town tender.
It's a hold.
Yeah. Can I ask whoever replaced the hold to identify themselves and ask their question?
Is there a specific question?
Going once?
Right here.
Going twice? Oh, I apologize. I'm sorry.
Hi. Sue Schofield, James Road. I'm just curious what the status is of our current tender and why we feel the need that we need a new one.
He says don't worry about the total. No, we're voting the lines, not the total.
Jake Emerson, Harbor Master. For those people who don't know what a tender is, it's a dinghy, it's a rowboat, and it needs to be replaced. It's used by my staff to get back and forth to the mooring, we can't leave the, excuse me, the boat on the floats, and by people who choose to row out to their boat. We've had this thing since before I was in town, so I don't even know, I mean, that's 17 years, so hopefully, this $3,000 investment will get us that long as well.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'd like to speak to that too as well. I've ridden...
Could I ask you to introduce yourself, please?
Sure. I'm Adam Elamine, 55 Crescent Street.
Thank you.
I've ridden in the town tender before, and it's pretty scary. It's small. The gunnel on the side is chipped, it's coming apart. I'm not too sure even the paddles will stay in the little holes right there. It's pretty rickety, it's in pretty bad shape, so I'd recommend that.
Thank you.
Is it too late to ask a question about line 1 and 2?
As long as it's in this, in this group, we'll deal with it.
Laurie Hall, 175 Abrams Hill. I do not understand why the fire department needs, it looks like bulletproof vests, is that what ballistic vest means?
Well, I see our fire chief is on his way over, so I'm sure he'll have an answer Chief?
Good afternoon. Kevin Norwood, Fire Chief, Emergency Management Director, through you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, in fact, they are ballistic, otherwise known as bulletproof. We're purchasing six and helmets to go with them as well. The story behind this is, as you know, with the recent school shooting in Florida, that our paramedics, which would be wearing these, find themselves in some compromising situations along with law enforcement, and we're just trying to give them the... along with law enforcement, and we're just trying to give them the protection that they deserve.
Could I ask a question? How many, how many times in the town of Duxbury have fire department people been shot at?
Last year.
Ever?
Yeah, last year, there was an altercation on Toby Garden Street with a long gun, as well as knives, and we found ourselves, this is the paramedics and the ambulance mostly, going to domestic-related calls that can get quite violent at times, even in this town. And we also share our ambulance with several other communities around us as they share theirs with us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, I'll call for a vote. As I think you know by now, one for yes, two for no. Voting is closed and the item passes 271 to 20. We have a second motion in Article Seven, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of $48,590 as the Small Equipment and Minor Services Budget for the purposes and in the amounts specified below, and to meet said appropriation, raise and appropriate the sum of $48,590 to be expended under the direction of the School Committee.
Second.
Duxbury Schools, line 12, purchase classroom furniture, phase one of four, $10,000. Line 13, purchase green classroom chairs, for the high school, 60, $5,520. Line 14, purchase student desks, 60, Duxbury High School, $8,210. Line 15, replace auto scrubber, 24 inches, for the floors, $9,000. I believe this UNO-M is a trade name, skid desks, 30 for the middle school, $4,100. Purchase green classroom chairs, 30, middle school, $2,760. And line 18, classroom door and security window shades, $9,000. This was a safety measure recommended by the Chief of Police and supported by the School Committee and the Superintendent. $48,590 is the total.
Seeing no questions, I'll call for a vote at this time. Voting is closed and the article passes 200, or the motion passes 282 to 39. Article number eight, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move to indefinitely postpone this article.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Article number nine.
I move that the town establish annual expenditure limits for the revolving funds established by the town's general bylaws, Section 1.4, as printed in the warrant. Line one, senior center, $175,000. Line two, Jay Cox Tree Farm, $20,000. Line three, hazardous materials response, $50,000. Line four, regional dispatch services, $150,000.
Second. Seeing no questions, I'm going to ask for a vote on Article number nine. I'm...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Reed, please, please go to the microphone. Don Reed, 31 Captain's Hill Road. Are these expenditures never to exceed these amounts, or is this a, just a general amount? Do we have an answer for Mr. Reed?
That's correct.
Mr. Reed, you are correct, I am told. These are, these are limits, not... Any other questions? We'll call for a vote then. All those in favor, press one. Voting is closed, article passes 300 to 18. Article number 10, Mrs. Sullivan.
I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $35,000 to fund the cost of operating electronic balloting at town meeting.
Second. Seeing no questions, I'll ask for a vote on Article number, number 10. And the motion passes 301 to 24. Article number 11 is the, is the annual article we see for the Duxbury Beach lease. Since it is a lease of property, it will take a two-thirds vote to pass.
I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $750,000 to be expended under the direction of the town manager for the purpose of leasing Duxbury Beach, being that portion of land in the towns of Duxbury and Plymouth owned by the Duxbury Beach Reservation, Inc., south of a line running approximately east to west along the northerly edge of the northerly parking area at the east end of the Powder Point Bridge, subject to an area of land excluded at High Pines used by the Duxbury Beach Reservation, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute a lease in the name and on behalf of the town of Duxbury for the period beginning July 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2019. On such terms and conditions, the Board of Selectmen deems in the best interest of the town.
Second. Is there any discussion or questions? Mrs. McNabb.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I believe this is an increase from last year. Could someone speak to that?
Mrs. Carney will speak to that.
My short answer would be if you took a ride out there today, yesterday, or the last week, you'd know why there was an increase. But the long incorrect answer is that a few years ago, Mr. Madden suggested that rather than be hit with a 500 or a million or a $200,000 increase because there was significant damage, that it would be better to allot it in small, regular amounts every year. And that's why the beach lease has been going up for $50,000 in the last few years. When I say that that is scarcely enough, maybe I should rephrase it, is probably inadequate. We need all the help we can get, but just keep one last thing in mind, Duxbury Beach is protecting the coastline of Duxbury. If I can answer any other questions, I'm happy to do so.
Thank you, Mrs. Carney, and certainly we all love the beach. I wondered, so it goes up, it was 700 last year, so it's gone up to 750 this year?
That's correct.
And does the reservation get any of the proceeds of the beach stickers? Or is this just...
The proceeds from the beach stickers do fund the $750,000 that we're asking for, and the rest of the money the town spends on the lease portion of the beach by controlling the traffic and the beachgoers.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote at this time on the, on the beach lease. And the vote passes 329 to 11. Article number 12.
Fourth of July appropriation. I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 to fund the Duxbury, town of Duxbury's Fourth of July Parade and Ceremonies to be expended under the direction of the town manager.
And do I have a second? Second.
With luck.
Thank you.
With luck, I hit him.
Seeing no, no questions or apparently any interest in a discussion, we'll go ahead and call for a vote at this time on Article number 12.
Rainey, Rainey, do you have this method of language?
And voting is closed, article passes 318 to 12. I do, thank you. Article 13.
Citizens Petition, amend zoning bylaws, proposal to rezone former Batella Memorial Institute property for residential compatibility, RC, to Neighborhood Business One. I move that the town vote to amend the town of Duxbury, Massachusetts zoning maps as revised and amended, as shown on the map for the petition to rezone from residential compatibility to NB1, and further shown on a plan of land entitled, quote, 0397 401 406 Washington Street, close friends.
Second.
February 21st, 2018, sorry.
We have a couple of presentations that are to be made on this article. One will be by the petitioner themselves, Mr. Bennett, and then our town planner has a presentation to make as well. Mr. Bennett, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Skip Bennett. I'm the owner, I'm a lifelong resident of Duxbury, and I'm the owner and founder of Island Creek Oysters. And as you probably heard, in November, we were finally able to purchase the Batella property down at the Snug Harbor waterfront. And we are extremely excited and honored to own this very important piece of property here in town. We were, we have been faced with years of trying to figure out how to continue to grow the business here in town and keep the business located in town, which isn't as simple as it, as it sounds. Batella offered actually an incredible fit, probably the only property that we could have bought here in Duxbury or anywhere else that would allow us to bring all of the different facets of Island Creek onto one property. That being, you know, the farming operations, the hatchery, the distribution, our retail, our foundation, and all of the administration that goes along with that. So, as I said, we're extremely excited to own this property. But owning this property presents us with a long list of challenges. Two of those challenges that really rise to the top and really go hand in hand. One of them is how to pay for the property, which is a rough one. And then also how we will use the parts of the property that we don't currently need. So it's become clear to me that this property has a real problem. And I think it's the reason why it was so difficult for Batella to sell the property. And that problem is that over the past 50-plus years, Batella has developed a commercial property on a residential piece of land in town. They were able to do this because they have extremely deep pockets and they operate under the status of nonprofit. This commercial kind of component is evident in the fact that on the upland portion of the property, there's a 9,000-square-foot state-of-the-art office building, which has nothing to do with residential. There are five residential homes on the property that have been converted over the past 50 years into office space and lab space. As a matter of fact, there are, in some of these historic homes, including the big yellow house right on Washington Street, there are pipes that come from Duxbury Bay that pipe seawater into these homes where the Batella did lab, you know, marine lab experiments in these homes. So they've been so far altered from actually being residence that I don't see a clear path to those buildings ever being residence again. So we are here today to ask for a zoning change, which would allow us to be able to rent those buildings for commercial uses, as, basically as they've been used over the past 50 years. We've held several public engagement sessions, we've been to countless board meetings, town board meetings, and really just from the input that we've received from the public, it seems that the priority of the town is that we keep the property as similar to what it's been in the recent past. So the only clear path to us doing that is to be able to rent these buildings out and generate some revenue from that and, and keep the property as it is today. If we can't do that, I think the only other option for us would be to sell that off as residential, which we would prefer not to. I think there's a lot of opportunity that is lost once that property becomes residential. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Chris Sherman from Island Creek Oysters. Chris runs the day-to-day, has worked closely with me on, on the purchase of this property. And Chris, along with Lori Zaplak, are master planner. We've put together a presentation that, for the sake of time, we've drastically whittled down, but hopefully we can present with a few slides our vision for the property and our, the reason for our ask of rezoning the property. Thank you.
Thanks, Skip. Hi, everyone. Chris Sherman, Tremont Street, also a lifelong Duxbury resident, and as Skip indicated, I'm president of Island Creek. So I want to be very mindful of your time. I know everyone's very busy and it's great to see everyone come out and participate. Clearly, this is a group of people that cares about this town. I include myself in that group as well. And I want to thank everyone that up to this point has participated in the conversation about this property. There was various town boards, the Selectmen, the Planning Board, the Finance Committee. We held public information sessions, we met with neighbors, and a number of private meetings with concerned citizens as well to talk through the nuances of this admittedly complicated piece of property. And I think one of the things that we came away from is saying, you know, Island Creek has enjoyed a very special relationship with this town for a long time, and this process, you know, it's my feeling that that has really just amplified that relationship. We came before the Planning Board first, actually, and we had no 3D renderings, you know, we had no architectural drawings of what we wanted to build. And that's twofold, one because, you know, our mission from the get-go was to keep the property whole, but it's also because, A, we're not developers, we grow oysters, that's how we make our money, we're not in the real estate business. But also, we thought it made, and maybe we were naive to do this, but we thought it made a lot more sense to come and say, let's have a chat about this town, rather than to come with us a very concrete set of plans and say, this is what we want to do, you people need to figure out a way to make it happen. So through that process, what we arrived at was, you know, the commercial zoning, which Skip indicated, you know, being the clear path to getting sustainable uses into those office buildings, you know, the overarching theme is that the relationship between the zoning of the property and the actual infrastructure, and really the history of the property, doesn't jive, it's broken. It's a property that is commercial, it's all office... jive. It's broken. It's a property that is commercial. It's all office space and lab space and some storage space. But it is zoned to be homes. There's nothing on that property that resembles a home. So, really, what the overall thrust of the zoning ask is, is to create zoning that is reflective of what's actually there. But one thing kind of rose to the fore as being particularly important is the streetscape along Washington Street. And there was a few different iterations of this as we kind of workshopped it with various boards and meetings. And we talked about putting these homes into, all three homes that are on the property, actually, into a local historic district. That's something that's not off the table. But really, what it came down to was, you know, we require, from an economic standpoint, as Skip mentioned, to rezone the property as NB1. But what that does is if we can get a tenant or two into some of the office space, it allows us the kind of breathing room that we need to be able to have a more protracted conversation about the two lots along Washington Street. So, what we've done is we've created an AR plan in conjunction with the town planner and the planning board to remove those lots entirely from this request. So, really, what you have is the upland portion of the property where, where these homes are are off the table. And then down by the waterfront, we will be occupying that. So, a lot of the buildings in question are the, the nine thousand square foot office building in the middle of the property, which you see in purple in the top left corner, just adjacent to the removed lot. I'm not sure if I have a laser pointer on here or not, but there it is. That's the nine thousand square foot office building. And then some of these other ancillary buildings as well could be rented as office space. So, so, you know, one of the things that makes this work is not only that it allows us to get people into these buildings, to use them what they were built for, but it also gives us the fluidity that we need operating in our business, even down on the waterfront portion of the property, to do things that aren't just farming. Island Creek does a lot of different things. And we are kind of conscious stewards of the land and, and neighbors and citizens in this town. But there are things that we want to do that, you know, probably would be a debate about whether it's farming or not. One of those things is to create an opportunity for somebody to come down and enjoy some oysters and a glass of wine or beer on the waterfront on a Thursday evening. And that really speaks to the fact that, you know, from the get-go, we approached this both as, you know, people running a business that needs a home, but also as Duxbury residents. And one of the things we wanted to make happen was to create out of this property an asset for this community, you know, to make it, have it become residential, whether it was multifamily that got resoundingly voted down last year at this meeting, or an eight-lot subdivision that got a lot of resistance in town. I think a lot of that kind of consternation came from the fact that this is a big chunk of our waterfront. And people felt pretty strongly about the fact that, A, they want it to remain largely as it is. We don't want some sort of massive development there. And B, we want it to be accessible in some way for the public so that we can all enjoy it, enjoy Duxbury Bay, our kind of greatest, greatest asset. And we see this NB1 zoning as the best possible path to do that. It's also a great way to, you know, with all of these very difficult budget conversations, to pad the commercial tax base in town in a very low-risk way. We pay about a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year in taxes on this property as it stands. The other kind of uses that are currently permissible, a church, a school, another farm, or residential, do not impact the tax base in that way. So, I think that that, particularly after today's discussions, seems to be pretty valuable. And so, that brings up the other point is risk. Nothing is risk-free. And what we've discovered through this process, learning about the zoning here in town, is that it's in dire need of an update. That's the bad news. If you look at the uses that are allowed under NB1, one of them is a video rental store, most of which don't exist anymore. So, that's the bad news. The good news is that we've also learned that town staff and the planning board, various volunteers are working very diligently to create a master plan and to update the town's zoning bylaws so that they better suit this era and then the kind of needs and wants of the town at this point. But NB1 is the best tool that we have available to us right now. And the reason why it's not very risky and we see it as the best option is that, A, first and foremost, we see the list of uses. Some of them are a funeral parlor or a bus station. You know, these are things that are not in keeping with the neighborhood. And I'd remark that any of those uses actually require a special permit. Those are actually my kids up there making the ruckus, so I apologize. I hope they vote yes. So, so that list of uses, you know, is not in keeping, but they would, anything that happens on this property that takes up a footprint of more than, I think, six hundred square feet, which is almost nothing, requires a special permit through the ZBA. So, this is not a free-for-all. We have to have faith in our boards and our institutions to enforce the essence of those permits, which are to ensure that they're in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood. But the last piece of it is just kind of in reality, you know, if you think about Snug Harbor, Snug Harbor is zoned in this way as well. The rest of Snug Harbor is all NB1 or NB2, which actually has a broader kind of list of acceptable uses. And no one's kind of tossing and turning on their pillow at night worrying about a strip mall or a bus terminal or a funeral parlor being put up in Snug Harbor. And that's because those buildings in that space are filled with economically sustainable users that are in keeping with the neighborhood, but can also function there as office tenants or the maritime school or the yacht club. You know, none of that is kind of in danger of going away because they're there. And really, what this does is allows us to put uses into these buildings that make sense, to generate some cash flow and stabilize the property. So, we can all take a deep breath and have a more robust and sophisticated conversation about what's to happen, not only to those two lots on Washington Street, but ultimately to make a proactive statement as a community about what we actually want Snug Harbor to be, not just what we don't want it to be. And that's really at the essence of what we're trying to do here. We have a willing participator in us as the quote-unquote developers. And we have a great kind of milieu in the town right now among staff and boards working on these issues. And I'm very confident that this is really just the beginning of a conversation that will have a fantastic outcome. The alternative, you know, I find much riskier. While there aren't, you know, hordes of commercial developers lining up to come do some sort of big commercial mall development in Duxbury, you know, we just wouldn't support it. There are lots of developers in line to do residential subdivisions. And so, if we choose to kick this can down the road, this is in no way an ultimatum. It's just reality to say that we are running a greater risk of that happening. And from, from my personal standpoint and the value judgment that we've made about that, that property and what the community needs, that is not a desirable outcome. And again, that's up to you. Again, the fantastic form of government to be able to make these decisions in this way. But that's kind of the conclusion that we've come to after exhaustive work and research. So, I'd like to thank you all once again. You know, we feel more a part of this community through this process than we ever have. One of our written core values that we recorded over a decade ago is that to run a business that the Town of Duxbury can be proud of. And this, in our eyes, is a great opportunity to make that, to kind of prove, prove ourselves to that core value and also kind of amplify that, that notion that the industry here and Island Creek itself is an asset to this town. This property is a great platform to allow us to do that. So, thanks again for your time.
We'll now hear from our town planner.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just waiting for my slide to load up. I don't have such good graphics. I didn't grow up in Duxbury, so I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. This is the map that, that was mentioned in the motion. And whoops, it's not doing what I thought it would do. So, some of my graphics aren't working. But this map is the A and R plan that was described by Chris when he was telling you what you're voting on. This map was brought to the planning board. It's called an approval-not-required plan. It's not actually signed because they don't have the intention of recording it. But we had to draw up a map that would provide us to have the, the parcels that would be carved out. So, if you look at this, it looks a lot like the graphics that they just showed you. And the two lots that you see fronting on Washington Street are written as to remain as residential compatibility. And this is a very short overview of the zoning that's allowed in the neighborhood business. You can have housing if you have the right density. You have a lot of prohibited uses. And then you also have these uses, both listed above and simplified, so they'll fit on the slide, a bakery, you know, very small things, an accessory greenhouse, a dwelling above, a commercial. I understand the public transportation passenger station was actually to cover the school buses that were parked behind one of the gas stations years ago. There's really no intention, I think, that the town had of ever putting a bus stop down at the waterfront. But some, that's how old this zoning is. And then we have this thing called a special permit. A special permit means the zoning board of appeals has to have a super majority in agreement that a use that's bigger than three car spaces, so that's a very small use. Anything over that size goes to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit. And my graphic of three parking spaces is missing too. But those special permit processes take a public hearing. There's vetting through all of the boards, department heads, public safety, health, the planning board, the fire chief. Everybody takes a look at these proposed uses as a special permit. It's made on an individual decision basis only. And what they look at is, in addition to that, they'll look at traffic impacts on the neighborhood compatibility with the neighborhood. And they can impose conditions on those uses. So, we've had a long history of using that special permit process for the neighborhood business districts using this zoning. And it's rendered us safe so far. So, with that, I'm going to step away.
So, I would assume we're going to have some questions about this. And we'll recognize the gentleman in the back on the right-hand side.
Thank you. Wayne Dennison, Standish Street. I happen to chair the zoning board of appeals. I am not speaking in that capacity. I am speaking as a Duxbury resident. I did want to echo what the town planner just said relative to the use of this property, other than the way it is now conceived as a residential compatibility district. Almost anything you do would have to come before the zoning boards of appeals, which would require significant review, both by the planning board, the board of health, all of the significant town boards, recommendations from the design review board, and a very substantial public process pursuant to which conditions can be imposed relative to any use or improvement of the property.
Thank you. A woman on the upper right.
Hello. Holly Will Brenner, two sixty-four Washington Street. With my husband and two sons, we are the proprietors of the Windsor House Inn, a butters of this property at Patel on Washington Street. And we strongly support the proposal by Skip and Chris to take over the property and develop it with what we think is a wonderful plan. We'd like to urge fellow citizens of Duxbury to support this. As oysters have been good for the bay, this proposal is going to be very good for the town.
No. And frankly, somewhat out of order, but we will now have a report from the planning board. Yes, thank you.
Yeah. So, just briefly, the planning board's report related to this rezoning of Island Creek Oysters from the residential compatibility to neighborhood business one. And after a public hearing that was held on January twenty-fourth and continued to February fourteenth, two thousand and eight, enclosed on that date, the planning board voted five to zero to support the article as amended with respect to the map.
Thank you. Mr. Guitard.
Fernando Guitard, Finance Committee. I'll report out from the Finance Committee. The current article thirteen as amended on the floor would carve out from MB1 zone two forty thousand square foot lots retaining within a residential compatibility district, the Nathaniel Windsor House at four oh five Washington Street and the Bridge House at three ninety-seven Washington Street. The property currently zoned as a residential compatibility, compatibility district allows a property owner the right to construct, A, detached, single-family dwellings and incidental accessory structures, B, buildings for religious and education purposes, or C, to use the land for agriculture. Since nineteen sixty-five, the previous owners of the property, Patel Memorial Institute, a private, nonprofit, applied science and technology development company, has used the property for scientific purposes, as a pre-existing and also exempt use allowed under its current residential compatibility zoning. This has enabled Patel to, over the years, construct new buildings and convert existing buildings into offices and laboratories. Today, in essence and in reality, the properties and their uses are essentially those described in the town's zoning bylaw, article four twenty, Neighborhood District, District, Neighborhood, Neighborhood Business One, section four twenty-one, uses and structures that may be permitted, subject to special permit site plan requirements, professional office and general business office. The intent behind the citizen position in changing the current zoning to MB1 has two objectives. First, to enable Island Creek Oysters to operate their hatchery, farm distribution company, retail operation, and nonprofit foundation from one location, and create a new home for ongoing aquaculture, research, education, and outreach efforts. Second is to enable Island Creek Oysters to rent out space in the clap building, a purpose-built office building, to tenants interested in professional and general business office space. Island Creek Oysters plan to use existing infrastructure and property to achieve these two objectives as-is, with little significant change to the streetscape or view from the bay. Once rezoned to MB1, the article would allow what Island Creek, Island Creek Oysters is proposing. Zoning would also allow Island Creek Oysters or any future owner of their property to other uses as detailed in the town zoning bylaw, article four twenty, MB1. It is, however, important to note that a special permit process will be required with the zoning board of appeals as a special permit granting authority, as well as an administrative site plan review by the planning board. Both the special permit process and administrative site plan review include public hearings, enabling the residents of this town the opportunity to provide input and comment on the uses that may be proposed by Island Creek Oysters or any future property owner. It is also important to note that in proving a special permit, the board of appeals shall use the criteria consistent with a reasonable use for the site for the purpose permitted within a neighborhood, neighborhood business district, which in, in which it is located. Based on above discussion, the Finance Committee voted in favor, six to zero, to recommend with one abstent, abstention. Thank you.
I see somebody making their way to the microphone.
Hi. Right here.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm going to speak from my heart right now. My name's Leila Elamine and I live at fifty-five Crescent Street. So, I went to high school with Chris. And I just personally am so incredibly proud of our generation. And I think that Chris really epitomizes that. I think he's created, and Skip, a socially responsible, small business that people talk about around the United States. I mean, think about that for a second. I think that by voting yes to Island Creek Oysters, you're investing in the future of our generation. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentleman front.
Scott Cassagrande, five hundred Washington Street, also current chairman of the planning board. As everyone knows this property, I'll be brief. The property itself was something that's been on the planning board's radar for well over a decade now with the future thought that Patel would eventually abandon the over a decade now with the future thought that Patel would eventually abandon the site and sell it. We last year went through what a potential residential development would be in two different phases, one with condos along the water, and the waterfront is obviously something we're very concerned with with this property as well. And in this case here, with what we have now for the results with Island Creek Oysters, who have been basically an absolute, kind of a dream from even the planning board's side of things, to work with, they came to us and have been very responsive to what our concerns were. The waterfront, as we all know, is a concern, but a little less of a concern with what they plan to do there than some of the other options for this site were. In the past, as a planning board, we've even had brief discussions about what would the future of this site look like at any one time, because there was a whole multitude of things it would be. And the rezoning, the way that we have it here, again, Island Creek Oysters have been very responsive. We were concerned with, if you rezon the entire property, what would the street scape potentially look like? They've been willing to pull those two properties out, keep those residential, and we'll move on, take a step back and move on to those and what that could become in the future at a different time. And the rest of this being, you know, MB1, it's adjacent to our Neighborhood Business District as it is now, so we're not creating a new Neighborhood Business District. This is basically just a continuation along that whole area that we have where the Sweetser's development is, that whole business district. So this is, I feel, again, they've been great to work with, very responsible to everything that we have here in the town, and I think this is a great opportunity for their business and the town. Thank you.
We have one more person who's been at a microphone, and maybe we're easing up on a vote. Sir?
Thank you. Scott Shore, 33 Anchorage Lane, and which is a property that should be rezoned as partially accessible at low tide only recently. It's been a rough few months. I just want to commend Mr. Bennett and Mr. Sherman for putting forth a very thoughtful plan, and I think that as a town, we should encourage local businesses, homegrown, literally homegrown businesses, to flourish here and remain in Duxbury. And so their plan does so. It's a beautiful property and will be a beautiful property when their vision is put in place. The only other small point I'm going to make is there are 46 articles, and whenever these big votes come around, we'd like to register a request for a motion to reconsider immediately following this vote, so we can have that also happen. If people are not familiar with that, we've done that with the school vote and other big votes here, to make sure that there cannot be another revote that occurs at a different period of time with a different audience, if this town meeting goes past the end of the day today, which it might with the 46 articles. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think, all right, one more question. We have somebody who's queued up. Do you have something new to add?
Yes, I have nothing to add. My name is Rich Holmes. I live at 593 Lincoln Street. I see that it says the selectmen are going to discuss this at the meeting, and they haven't yet.
Does the selectman have a comment?
I think at least a week or two ago, I don't know where you're reading that, but the selectmen voted three to zero in favor of this.
Thank you. Okay, how about, I'm going to call for a vote at this time. If you're in favor of the zoning change, please vote one. If you're opposed, vote two. It takes a two-thirds vote to pass. Voting is closed, and I'm going to say it passed 376 to 30.
Amended the general bylaws, facilities for marijuana not medically prescribed. I move that the town amend its general bylaws by adding new Section 7.25 as printed in the warrant.
Second. Our town planner will speak to this article, and then we have two other people as well who will be making presentations before we open it up to general discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have my slide cooperating with me. We'll see what happens. First, I want to address all three articles related to marijuana in one slide, Articles 14, 15, and 16. First, I want to address what they do not do. They do not affect the individual use or growing of marijuana for recreational purposes. That's not affected. And the other thing that this does not affect is the ability to have a medical marijuana facility located in Duxbury. Neither of those are affected by the proposed zoning articles. I know that's been a concern that has come up in some of our conversations. What it does do is it reflects the town of Duxbury's position when it came on the state ballot as to the non-medically prescribed marijuana legislation that recently passed. The town of Duxbury's presentation in that vote was a no vote, and we therefore have prepared two articles for you reflecting that position. First is Article 14. It's a general bylaw that's going to propose a ban on the types of marijuana processing that are related to this legislation, which is Chapter 94G, Section 3, regarding licensed That's retail, which is what you're hearing about, the shop fronts. But there's also folks who grow or make products related to marijuana. Those are also licensed under this regulation. So the general bylaw reflecting the town's position is a proposal to ban any of those types of facilities licensed under that legislation. Similarly, we have before you another article right following that, Article 15, which does exactly the same thing but through zoning. Again, it's related to the uses that are under that particular legislation. They're the same, retail facilities, growers, and people that make products or deliver them. Lastly, there's a housekeeping article, which is Article 16. Several years ago, there was new legislation with respect to medical marijuana facilities, which are separate from this legislation that I was talking about previously. The town imposed a temporary moratorium at that time because the regulations had not been promulgated by the state, similar to what we have today with respect to the non-medically prescribed marijuana. And so we're asking that we pull that out because it expired in 2014, and we want to do a little housekeeping while we're at it. Again, it does not affect the ability to have medical marijuana facilities in the town of Duxbury. Police chief has a presentation with much more detail on the whys and the hows. One of the things we're struggling with is that the state itself has not released final, they're in draft upon draft, of regulations on how marijuana will be managed under this new law, and we aren't in a position to understand how that's going to take place. So this is a belts and suspenders approach, both the general bylaw and the zoning bylaw. And to keep it simple, vote yes if you want to say no.
And we'll now hear from our police chief, Chief Clancy.
What do you need? The clicker?
We have a larceny. I'm going to try to do this without my reading glasses. This is going to be a fun challenge. Oh, no, I have them here. I just haven't.
Too vain to wear them?
Yeah, I'm trying to fight this as long as I possibly can. A couple of things I just want to mention that the Cannabis Control Commission has, just in the last couple of days, they have approved the final draft of their regulations. We're still weeding through those now. So that's been a little bit of a development since the last time I did a presentation on this at the library just a couple of weeks back. But suffice it to say that if these initiatives here fail, then the town will now have to begin the process of developing our own supporting regulations. So I just want to talk to you very briefly about these three, just mainly the concept of the recreational marijuana here in the town of Duxbury. And I'm going to be looking at, talking quickly about some uncertainty, still there's some uncertainty, some costs that we are going to anticipate that will have to bear here in the management of recreational marijuana, if it is to come to our town. Talk a little bit about the implications on crime, opting out, what other towns are doing, what's going on, and a little bit about really my feeling on this whole issue, and that it really comes down to a character of community consideration here in Duxbury. So the uncertainty, as you've seen nationally, the Attorney General has lifted sort of the hands-off policy, and marijuana is still illegal federally. And frankly, we're not sure right now how far that envelope will be pushed. Will the U.S. attorneys be prosecuting these cases? How does that collide with Massachusetts? How does that collide with this emerging industry, I guess? So there remains that uncertainty. Where the last time we spoke, the regulations in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts were still being discussed, and there was a lot of debate, the governor at one point, he got a little frustrated with the commission, concerned about they were overreaching sort of their mission. Those things have sort of been vetted out, and just recently, like I say, we just now have gotten our hands on the state's regulations, and we'll see where that takes us. So obviously, there's still a little bit of uncertainty, particularly from the federal side. This could be a short-lived industry. We don't know. Potential cost to the town, well, we're going to be looking at, there'll be some zoning issues, I'll assume, and there'll be costs associated with that, with the legal vetting and time and preparation to deal with it. Development of the municipal regulations, now that we have state regulations, each city and town is now going to have to build their own local regulations, and a cost associated with that. The regulatory functions, as the ballot initiative said, it was to create this market that sort of mirrored how we regulate alcohol. Well, I can tell you that how we regulate alcohol in this municipality now, and there are certain pieces to that, that both town hall staff and police enforcement staff constantly touch. So those things will have a cost impact to local communities. Compliance and verification efforts, that's what we do on a regular basis with our alcohol operations. We're constantly doing compliance check stings, if you will, making sure that they're not selling to minors, that they are closing when they're supposed to be closing, and all those kinds of things. And again, the same, that will be true of this industry if it comes to our town. And then there's just the training, and frankly, of my staff as to what these compliance efforts will be. There's still a little bit of uncertainty. The Cannabis Control Commission has set forth these regulations, just like I say, just in the last couple of days, but they did say that there were a number of things that they do want to revisit next year, sort of opening up sort of other types of businesses. So we're going to be, wait and see, and see how we're going to have to address those things from a local law enforcement and compliance perspective. What that means is training staff, not just my staff to do those types of things, but again, at town hall, the folks that are involved with the liquor regulations, we're going to have to get them up to speed on whatever these new regulations will be, and, you know, again, associated costs to go with that. From my perspective, whenever I hear all cash business, I hear cash equals crime, and I was taught that 30-plus years ago in the police academy. And in this particular case, it's even more interesting, because marijuana is illegal federally, then it's not, these banks are not federally insured. Losses, they can't put their money into your banks, so that's what makes it a cash business. One of the things that they ran into, and I have a number of colleagues in Colorado that I speak with on a regular basis, folks that I've been to schools with, seminars and trainings, and some of the crimes that they've had, just related to that cash situation, has been troublesome to them. Where are they putting that cash? Well, some folks find out where they're putting that cash, and they're having robberies and home invasions and the like. Little bit of data that's coming out of Colorado, crime is up 11% since legalization in 2013, and all at a time when trends of crime rates in this country have been going down, been going down for quite some time. The other thing that struck me, and this is from the Denver Post, and the Brennan Center for Justice put this out just a few months ago, there's a grouping that the DOJ follows, it's a grouping of major cities, and they group them together, and they follow the crime trends and the crime rates in those cities. And the state of Colorado in 2016, their rising crime was 11 times that of that major city grouping. I found that to be rather noteworthy. And just out of the Denver Post, just not long ago, because of the rising crime issue in Colorado, the blame game. Well, a lot of folks are going to say it's got nothing to do with the marijuana industry, but there's a lot of folks that do think, you know, do think that that's just the case. Some lawmakers and police and legal experts, they're partly blaming the marijuana industry because they're saying it's lured, as you can see, transients and criminals to the state for the easy access to what elsewhere is not legal. Cut me off. Opting out, so here's what's going, before we even talk about locally, Colorado, 66% of the communities in Colorado opted out of this. In Oregon, so far, 79 towns and 16 entire counties have opted out. And here's what's going on around here. Oh, wrong one. So it's right now, there's 32 towns that have, that doesn't even list all the 32, that have voted bans. Ones and bold are our neighbors here in Plymouth County. One of the things I want to point out here is that if we take this action today, we're not impeding on anybody's rights. The law is the law, and there are local communities that you can get in the car, and if you so choose to, you're an adult, and you choose to consume some cannabis products for whatever your leisure may be, get in that car and take a ride a couple of towns away or one town away, there is going to be local availability. We're not looking to impede upon that in any way, shape, or form. I would suggest that if we pass on a ban, as more and more towns do that, are we now sort of inviting, we becoming sort of a destination for folks from other communities to come through our community to seek this stuff out, and that may be of some kind of concern. For me, again, I keep saying that there'll be a lot of debate about numbers, and folks who, some of these debates in some of these towns got, you know, unfortunately, they're kind of colorful. And I know, you know, the character of Duxbury, we're always very civil in our debate, and there's always a great deal of decorum, so I know that's not going to happen here, but it got emotional in a number of these towns and some of our neighboring communities. But to me, it's really, it's simple. It just comes down to the character of the town. We did a lot of discussion earlier today about the schools, and doing, sort of taking care of a funding issue that we have with the schools, and a lot of discussion about what the schools do and what are, you know, as a community, you know, the value that we put in to our youth in those schools, in the community itself. And in the last presentation on the zoning with Island Creek Oyster, you know, it sort of came to the character of the town of Duxbury. That's what this is all about, to me, really, in a nutshell. You know, we have protective zoning here in Duxbury, and that's, you know, so that's why we sort of don't see these things, you know, here in Duxbury. Well, do we want to see this? So I kind of say, you know, it's my personal opinion, thanks, but no thanks. But let's talk about Duxbury again. This is the town I know. This is the town I know. I truly do. So I'll step away, but could we have a problem with our property values, preserving the character of our town? Send the right message to the kids, please. Let's not normalize this. Please vote yes to say no. Thank you.
And we have one additional presentation before we open this up for discussion. Starting off will be Karen Wong.
Great job, Chief Clancy. Hi, thanks, I know it's been a long day, thank you all for being here still. My name is Karen Wong, and I'm the coordinator of Duxbury Facts. Duxbury Facts is a community-wide coalition focusing on reducing substance use and promoting mental wellness. Duxbury Facts is involved in both education and intervention. Working with Duxbury Facts is a natural extension of my history of volunteering on youth issues. I was on several school councils, the Youth Risk Behavior Task Force, I was on the school committee, and I spend a lot of other volunteer time working around the world with groups that focus on youth and family issues. As the chief said, in 2016, the voters in Massachusetts chose to make recreational marijuana legal, and I'm not here to challenge the law or an adult's right to use, although it's noteworthy that Duxbury voted no. In fact, all the communities in Massachusetts that have the highest incidence of overdoses overwhelmingly voted no to legalize. I'm not here to speak out against medical marijuana, because it can be very efficacious in certain situations. Duxbury Facts supports the planning board's article to vote no on the pot shops because of, I'm sorry, we vote no, sorry about that. I'm not as fluid as the chief was. Other towns may choose to allow, and so adults will have plenty of opportunities, but I'd like you to join Duxbury Facts in sending a message to our children and teens and young adults that Duxbury puts their health and safety first. Our community wants them to know that marijuana use is detrimental to healthy brain development. We want our children to adopt healthy habits for relaxing, having fun, and coping with stress. We want our kids to ask us, why can't we buy weed in town? Because that's an important conversation for parents to have with their kids. Easy access and normalization of marijuana for kids is the reason why Duxbury Facts opposes having the shops in town. As it becomes more commonplace for adults to use recreational marijuana casually and socially, it becomes easier for youth to have access, but the outcomes can be dangerously different. There is indisputable evidence that the younger a person is when they start using drugs or alcohol, the higher the likelihood of addiction. No, not every teen who uses marijuana or drinks alcohol will become addicted, we just can't predict who will become addicted. The Centers for Disease Control reports that 1 in 6 people who repeatedly use marijuana before the age of 18 may become addicted. In states that have legalized recreational marijuana, teen use has spiked. Colorado went from 14 to number 1 in teen use. I could read off many statistics about increased use in schools, the increase in dropout rates, increase in emergency room visits, car accidents, and addiction treatment increases due to marijuana, but that information is available on handouts and from our other speakers. While retail shops will be for over 21, the brightly colored packaged and colored candies and cookies and edibles are very appealing to children, and that's not by accident. The liquid forms and oil can easily be camouflaged and vaped in devices that look like USB drives, very easy to conceal, no odor on the breath, easier to conceal than chewing gum in school, actually. I'm speaking here today for the children of Duxbury who need us to lead by example, to say no to the pot shops next to sub shops in our town. Numbing the pain of adolescence with substances instead of healthier coping mechanisms is all too common, and just after being alive for more than 50 years, and my years on Duxbury Facts, I've heard incredibly heartbreaking stories about kids who just tried it for a little while to either fit in or to just sort of numb whatever stress they were feeling, and that occasional use turned into weekly use. Well, when weekly use didn't solve their problems, they were using it daily. Unfortunately, that just masked whatever the stressors were and didn't help them, and sadly, many of these kids turned into harder drugs. And I've had parents literally screaming at me in pain because of their pain and because that Duxbury Facts wasn't getting the job done fast enough. You know, we're trying, we're all working together here. So you may think that substance use has absolutely nothing to do with a few retail weed shops in town. Heck, we already have so many alcohol shops, so what's the big deal? But the reality is underage alcohol use in Duxbury is very concerning, so I don't see how normalizing weed and making it more accessible to our kids and acceptable to our kids is the right message for us to send to youth. It's within our control here today to say no to these shops in our community. So on behalf of Duxbury Facts, I urge you to vote yes to say no on Articles 14 and 15, and Sue Bradford, oh, there she is, who's the co-chair of Duxbury Facts and the executive director of the Student Union has a couple words. Thank you.
My name is Sue Bradford, and I'm the executive director. I've had the privilege of being the executive director at the Duxbury Student Union for the last nine years, and I'm also the co-chair of Duxbury Facts. You may remember only just 15 years ago, a group of citizens here in Duxbury banded together over the concerning results that came from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. They wanted to provide a safe place where students could enjoy positive, age-appropriate activities and events. 11 years later, the Duxbury Student Union, a youth development nonprofit, thanks to the users and donors in this town, are impacting students from kindergarten to college with empowering, big world, and highly engaging experiences. At the DSU, we focus on promoting healthy, positive choices for youth. We've advocated for the protection of a child's developing brain, whether it be through ride-fat activities, for wearing a helmet for sports activities, and adhering to protocols following a concussion, and everything from physical activity to nutrition, to resilience, to coping skills, and absolutely delaying the use of marijuana. Duxbury and indeed Massachusetts have invested in our youth for generations. Massachusetts is number 1 in the country for education, and Duxbury is right up there, number 18 in the state. We've invested in our youth and the future of our community through our schools, our town programs, and the facilities here in town. Let's not take a huge step back for our youth. Please honor the commitment to youth this town has made for generations, and vote yes to banning recreational marijuana in Duxbury. Your vote may not solve the problem of underage marijuana use, but it will send a message that our town values the health and safety of our kids. Parents and grandparents will provide a great deal of influence on kids, both what they say and what they do. Your yes vote will make a difference. I wanted to also share with you a letter from Sue Horton, who has been a longtime resident of Duxbury, and now is the owner and the executive director of Ironwood, which is a therapeutic boarding school in Maine. I asked her about her thoughts on marijuana, retail marijuana in Duxbury, and she had a very strong opinion about it. She writes, "My experience and perspective comes from years of working with struggling teens. As a psychotherapist and the director of a residential therapeutic boarding school for teenagers, I can tell you that what I see today as significant mental health issues with teens is far worse than even 3 to 5 years ago. Our current culture is creating a generation of isolated, depressed, and anxious young women and men. Social media and gaming addiction is real, and likely the original source of why these issues are so predominant in today's teens world. However, the dual issue of substance use, especially with marijuana, is definitely adding insult to injury. I talk to families all over the country in crisis just about every day of my life. The stories are remarkably similar. The child they once knew usually within a year or two has completely disengaged on every level, in some way, educationally, socially, physically, and relationally. They are depressed and anxious. Evidence of self-harm or suicidal ideation usually coexists, either with substance use, whether it be alcohol, marijuana, or pills, cutting, and a pattern of habitual disrespect, defiance, or complete emotional cutoff and disconnection by their adolescent. The household is walking on eggshells. I know I'm not the first person to say that there's an epidemic emerging. Our families are struggling internally, the system is breaking from within. When I think about parents using recreational marijuana in front of their children, or retail outlets emerging in small towns across America, essentially condoning its use, I know that it will only make things worse. Teens already believe this drug is the great panacea of all things difficult in life. Now their role models are confirming it. The negative long-term effects of marijuana on the teen brain are well documented. This isn't about that for me. It's about communication and connection with the family. It's about being awake and aware as a parent, and it's about recognizing and preventing loneliness and isolation in our children. The issues we see every day in the media, mass school shootings, overdose victims, and teen suicide, all begin with a lonely, isolated, disconnected child. How can normalizing the use of a drug that disconnects people further possibly contribute to anything positive in our world? Thank you."
I'm having, I think there's somebody at the microphone in the back on the right. Please.
Adam Alameen, 55 Crescent Street. I'm a prospective cannabis entrepreneur, and I've been told by 2 people that I respect, you know, greatly, both in the public and private sector, that Duxbury probably is a lost cause in this respect, that, you know, you guys already have your minds made up, and the 2 types of people that show up to forums like this are just 2 parts of the extreme. But with that being said, there is one thing I'd like to point out, that there is a misalignment with the view of cannabis from, I would say, probably Chief Clancy, for example, and alcohol. The bylaws of the town state that it is decriminalized for someone to drink alcohol if they're under the age of 21. And when you're talking about teenagers and people who are under the age of 21 and not allowed to buy cannabis from a retail facility, you want to look at how they, you know, you want to step into the side of, inside of the mind of a teenager, think about how they see things, think about how they assess risk and all this stuff, and that's like, sort of, just talking to the point of prolonging the first experience with cannabis. Now, if you're a teenager in Duxbury, and you're going to, you know, decide what you're going to do on a Friday night, you think to yourself, okay, if I get a 30 rack of beers between me and 3 of my friends, and we go out to the beach and drink and get drunk, and your harbinger comes up upon us, or, you know, they call the police, they detain us, they get all their information, we're only going to get a misdemeanor. We're not going to lose our sports scholarships. We're not going to get into that much trouble, it's not going to be that much of a wake-up call. So with that being said, too, you know, when I first found out that Duxbury wanted to change or add bylaws to prohibit recreational marijuana, I just, I thought it was out of character for the town, because, I mean, I, you know, I thought that was a very liberal bylaw being passed, and, you know, it's to honor the class of 85, I would say alcohol is much more dangerous and addictive. And, you know, to the points that Chief Clancy made about Colorado, that was the first state in the country to legalize recreational marijuana. Of course, there's going to be an influx of bad characters, bad seeds, and they were just the test trial on how, you know, how this is going to work, how this is going to figure out. And, you know, the fact of the matter is, I just think that it would be, in a good addition to this town, you know, commerce and everything like that, I mean, we just raised our taxes this morning in this town, and, you know, we really have no way to bring ourselves out of that. We need to make more money in this town that has nothing to do with property taxes, so.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? We have somebody up to the left-hand corner?
Hi, my name's Samara Alameen, 55 Crescent Street. I'd just like to come out as a youth of the community and say that I feel a little unsteady about Duxbury Facts saying they're speaking for the youth of the community, when I have reached out to them twice about this issue and have had no response. I thought it was very interesting how our chief of police brought up pictures of, you know, a, sorry, I'm very bad at public speaking, brought up pictures of a cannabis store, but, you know, I could bring up at least 5 pictures of a liquor store in our town, you know. I also wanted to talk about how your kids already have access to marijuana. Your kids are already, you know, being, you know, talked to by these dealers, and that's what this bill is going to eliminate, is the black market. And I don't think people understand that you're going to go into a dispensary and they're going to ask you 3 times for your identification, and they're going to, they're not going to, you know, take fake IDs, as some stores in Duxbury may. They're going to actually look at them, and it's going to be impossible for youth to have access to this. Yeah, sorry, I lost my train of thought. Yeah, so thank you.
Thank you. I will recognize Mrs. Keefe down here, and then a woman at the top of the stairs.
Hi, Marie Keefe, 105 Elm Street. I have to assume that the people who are speaking in favor of amending this zoning bylaw, and there are also people who agree with it who are not speaking about it, but I have to assume that those people are very sincere in the belief that this will not be harmful to the character of Duxbury. Although I cannot, and I do not, agree with this position, I respect their right to have it and their willingness to stand behind it. Therefore, should this pass, I'm going to ask that those people not raise an objection should a recreational marijuana site be proposed for their neighborhood. I don't want one in mine, and I am going to vote yes to say no. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, if you could just give us your name again.
Lori Hall, 175 Abrams Hill. In response to this young lady over here, I want to say that in Colorado, where it has been legal for 5 years, they did a study, and almost half of their respondents, these are young people that were smoking marijuana, they were asked where they got it. Now, this is where it's legal, but, oh, you can't get it over 21, and half of the respondents said that they got it from people who were buying it and easily available, even for adults, I'm afraid by the Colorado people, they're going to get it. We should not be normalizing it by having it sold around town so that it gets in the culture, so they think it's okay, because it isn't. A group of people from our state went out to visit Colorado a few weeks before they voted to legalize it. Oh, excuse me, a few weeks before we voted to legalize it, to see how it was going. An obstetrician was interviewed, and he said, women who spoke, who smoke marijuana, who have, who are pregnant and have, give birth to infants, their brains have THC in the brain. THC passes through breast milk. When the obstetrician spoke to the women about this, they said, oh, we thought marijuana was safe. Well, it isn't safe. I also want to point out that since marijuana, THC is a psychoactive ingredient that numbs the brain. And when young people smoke it, they, it affects their judgment, and it affects memory. Needless to say, they do poorly in school. The result from Colorado is a rise in high school dropouts. That doesn't surprise me, if you have a rise in smokers. I hope that, this is what's in store for us and this state, if we have it around town where everyone can get it easily. I hope you vote in favor of this ban. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anything new to be added? Mr. Flynn?
I guess you know what side I come down on. If you'd like a quick education on marijuana, there's a nice booklet put out by the Office of National Drug Policy, Drug Control Policy, called Myths and Facts: The Truth Behind the Ten Most Popular Misconceptions. I'm not gonna waste a lot of time reading the ten, just quick ones. Marijuana is harmless. Marijuana is not addictive. Marijuana is not harmful to your health. Marijuana makes you mella. These are four of the myths, and I reemphasize the word myths. Just like to read you one. Nearly 290,000 teenagers entered drug treatment to kick the marijuana habit. This is a sin tax we do not need in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or in the country, but certainly we don't have to promote it here in Duxbury.
I sense we're ready for a vote at this time, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna call for a vote. So, we are voting on Article number four. Fourteen, I'm sorry, fourteen, excuse me. Article fourteen, and so I won't even attempt to describe it. We've had people who have explained it. So if you want to vote in favor of this article, vote, vote.
Yes to say no.
If you're in favor of a ban, you want to vote, vote yes. If you want, if you do not want a ban, you want to vote.
No to say yes.
I got it. Thank you, I struggled. The yeses have it overwhelmingly, 335 to 46. We are now on to Article 15. Article 15 is a bylaw that would deal with facilities for marijuana not medically prescribed. It's the zoning article. We'll hear a report from the zoning board, and I would just remind you that it's a zoning article, and therefore would take a two-thirds vote to pass.
I move that the town amend the Duxbury zoning bylaws by adding a new section 619, as printed in the warrant.
Second. Please, if you'll deliver the report of the planning board.
Cindy Lad, Fiorelli Clerk of the Planning Board. On the bylaw, zoning bylaw, section one, 619, excuse me, after a public hearing held on January 10th of 2018, enclosed on that date, the planning board voted six to zero to support the article on banning facilities for marijuana not medically prescribed.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion, any questions? Please, I have a question. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing a question. What does yes mean? I'm gonna ask our planner to tell you what yes means.
Does this no means no, or yes means no?
Voting yes means you are saying no to marijuana under the zoning bylaw. If you're opposed, then you vote no.
Let's, could we just stop for a second, and let me make sure I understand what you just said? I believe what you said is, if you do not want to allow marijuana prescription, retail, if you do not want to allow marijuana facilities, stores in our town, you want to vote yes.
Correct.
And, and if you would like to see them in town, you would vote no.
That's correct.
I think we've got that, so we're gonna, we're gonna try a vote. All those in, one for yes, two for no. Yes, that's the coward's way out. Voting is closed. It passes overwhelmingly, 327 to 50. We have, we have, we have one more, one more article in this, in this vein, Article number 16.
amend zoning bylaw, section 617, temporary moratorium on medical marijuana treatment centers. I move that the town amend the zoning bylaw by deleting in its entirety existing section 617, temporary moratorium on medical marijuana treatment centers, which expired on December 31st, 2014.
Second. Please, report from, I'm sorry, report from the planning board.
So after the planning board met on a public hearing on January 24th, 2018, enclosed on that date, the planning board voted five to zero to support this article.
Does anyone wish to speak to this article? This is a zoning article, take a two-thirds vote to pass. I will let you know that the selectmen voted three-nothing to recommend it, and the finance committee voted seven-nothing to recommend it. So I'm gonna call for a vote at this point. Press one for yes, two for no. There we go, we have the green light now. One for yes, two for no.
John, yellow, right?
The article passes 333 to 41.
Motion to reconsider Article 14?
We have a motion to reconsider Article 14. Article 14.
New information?
Is there, is there a reason, without speaking for or against the article, can you tell me why you'd like to reconsider?
Just procedural?
Procedural. I think, I think what we're getting at is, is the motion to reconsider is often used as a parliamentary maneuver. The reason being that we only allow an item to be reconsidered once in town meeting. It can't be brought up again. It's something that often happens, and so I will accept it as a motion to reconsider Article 14. If in fact, you would like to talk about Article 14 all over again, you want to vote yes. If in fact, you don't want to talk about Article 14, you're happy with the way it turned out, you want to vote no. So, is there anybody else who wishes to speak to the article, to the motion for reconsideration? Sensing there's nobody, I'm going to call for a vote on Article 14. If you want to continue, we have somebody who wants to talk. And this is about the idea of reconsideration, not about the underlying article.
Carolyn Dehart, 21, King Philip's Path. As I understand it, the reason you want to reconsider it is that we would say, yes, we want to reconsider it, then we voted again and again, you do yes for no, but, but. I understood that once you reconsider it and you vote it here, tomorrow night, or they cannot, it cannot come back.
If I could, if I could interrupt you for just a second. I believe the reason these people are doing it, and I don't mean to speak for them, is that you can only bring up a motion to reconsider an article once. So if we, if this is brought up and defeated, it can never come up again at this town meeting. If this is brought up for reconsideration.
My apologies, I was confused.
Not a problem.
Yes, but we have to, not this one.
Then, that having been, that question having been disposed of, we are now going to take a vote on reconsideration. And I think, is everybody confused about what we're trying to do here? Yes, I thought so. If in fact, you want to reconsider this and talk about Article 14 again, you want to vote yes. If in fact, you're happy with the way it turned out, and you do not want to bring up Article 14 again, you want to vote no. Having said that, we're gonna take a vote now. In fact, reconsideration fails. Thirty-one people, yes. Three hundred and thirty-nine people, no.
And Mr. Moderator, Reverend Catherine Cullen, again, in the same mode, I have a motion for reconsideration of Article 15.
And is there any particular reason for it?
Procedural.
Procedural. So I think we've had the explanation. I don't think we need to go through it again. That was pretty painful for, for me. I suspect it was even worse for you. So having said that, for Article 15, motion for, we're gonna vote on the article, on the motion for reconsideration. If you would like to go back and talk about this article, vote yes. If you're comfortable with the way it is, you want to vote no. I'm gonna call for a vote now. This article fails overwhelmingly, 22 to 342. Oh, I guess we're gonna go on.
Okay, 17.
Article number 17.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of $2,575,750. Two million, five hundred and seventy-five, two hundred and fifty, whatever, 2575750. And, to meet said appropriation, authorize the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen to borrow $2,575,750, under Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8, or any other enabling authority for the expansion, equipping, and furnishing of the Duxbury Senior Center on parcel number 093-500-096, on Mayflower Street. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the town manager, and to authorize the town manager to accept any grants for such project, and to authorize the board of selectmen to accept any gifts for such project, and further to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen to issue bonds and notes, therefore, provided further that any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any premium applied to the payment of costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs.
Second. Before we start the general discussion of this, we'd have a presentation. We have a presentation from Joanne Moore.
And the architect.
And the architect. The architect is?
Joe Circovich from Steffi and Bradley.
And my guess is that he is not a resident of the town of Duxbury. So I'm gonna ask the town meeting for permission for the architect. Can you just give us his name again?
Joe Circovich.
Why don't you speak?
Joe Circovich.
Is, I'm asking for a motion for, for Mr. Circovich to be able to speak to the town meeting for purposes of talking about the senior center. May I have a motion? Did I hear yet, did I hear a motion? Yes, I did. Second, all, all those in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Joanne Moore, and I'm the director of the Duxbury Senior Center, and I am so thankful to be here today to share our vision of the future with you. For the first time in history, there are more people 60 years old and older living in the Commonwealth than those 18 and younger. This trend is being mirrored across the country, in Massachusetts, and right here in Duxbury. To prepare for the future, in 2013, the Council on Aging Board began researching national trends and population statistics. Back in 2001, when the senior center was built, the U.S. Census documented there were 2,000 seniors living in town. By 2016, that number had increased to 4,260 seniors. That is a growth of 28.5% of the population. It is projected by 2030, the population will increase to 5,819 seniors, or 39% of the We are a nationally accredited senior center, one of eight in Massachusetts of the 350 senior centers in the state. We are in the forefront for programming, creativity in Massachusetts and the United States as a whole. In order to meet the needs of our growing senior community, we offer a variety of fee-based services to keep our seniors independent, healthy, active, and engaged. Our most popular programs include exercise, health and wellness, nutrition, and our award-winning lifelong learning and Alzheimer's Day program. We not only accommodate seniors in the town, but the community at large. The senior center is a focal point in the community and a place where people come together. The building is used by seniors from 8:00 in the morning till 4:00 in the afternoon. It is used by 47 different town-appointed committees in the evening. Last year, they met over 400 times. And just this past week, the senior center was used as a warming shelter for five days. And we helped families when there was power outage and they had no warmth. Many residents came in to warm up, get a cup of coffee, charge their technology. Many residents came in to warm up, get a cup of coffee, charge their technology, so they could stay connected with family and friends. This building is used by the entire community, and we need more space. We've been busy the last couple of years that brought us here today, and this is what we've been doing. In fall of 2016, a feasibility study was prepared by a volunteer committee at a cost savings to the town of approximately $75,000. At town meeting last year, the town approved $185,000 for architectural drawings for an addition at the senior center, and we are so thankful for your support. Today, we present plans for a 4,160-square-foot, two-story addition that will meet the diverse and growing needs of our senior population. This is the biggest amount of space we can add to our lot based on the buildable lot we have. The current construction bid is $2,575,750. Construction prices are rising, and the cost of this project is expected to increase if the project is delayed. Therefore, the time to expand is now. To mitigate the tax impact to residents, the financing of this project will be done for 15 years at a rate of 4.25%, and will be done within the tax levy limit. The homeowner with a house valued at $685,000 will see an approximate increase on their tax bill of $11 a quarter. Today, we present plans for a 4,160-square-foot, two-story addition that will maximize space on our buildable lot. This will be the only time we'll come back for a capital building project. We can't add any more space than that. I want to thank the people who helped us to get here. A successful project of this magnitude would not be possible without the support of many. I am thankful to the volunteer committee who worked diligently with Jo Sirkovich and Bob Clark from the architectural firm Steffian and Bradley, and our diverse and creative programming would not be possible without the generous support of our over 309 volunteers who gave 21,000 hours of service last year. This gift of time is valued at over $500,000, which is equal to our budget. I would like to thank John Madden and John Adams for their help with the financial information. I would like to thank our town planner Valerie Massard for documenting the population statistics from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. And now I'd like to turn this over to Jo Sirkovich, so he can give you details about our plan.
Thank you, Joanne. As Joanne said, my name is Jo Sirkovich. I'm with Steffian Bradley Architects. Our firm was hired in June of this past year to help out with the design and the construction documents for the addition that Joanne spoke of. We've had the pleasure of working directly with Joanne, the building committee, and the town representatives over the past six or seven months. As part of the initial process, we were handed the renovation and addition needs analysis that the building committee put together in 2016. This document is very comprehensive, statistical data about the increase in the population of the elderly here in Duxbury, the increased use that Joanne just spoke about, and clearly outlined in real clear terms the need for an addition to the existing senior center. This document came in handy throughout the course of our design because it also had a program with relative size of rooms, a concept floor plan, and a preliminary budget estimate of about $2.3 million. This document was prepared in October of 2016. Throughout the summer and fall of this past year, our designers and engineers worked closely with the committee, the town representatives, and Joanne Moore, of course, and throughout the design process, we met about every other week. As we looked at different options for the design, the committee was very focused on keeping the design very clean, efficient, very compact, and as we looked at different options, they were always eager to find out what the cost was. They were very concerned about maintaining the budget that was originally set out, so we constantly looked at options, but either looked at what the value was for the town and accepted those, or rejected and based on the cost and the value to the town. So I can quickly show you some of the plans that we've been working on. This is the existing site plan. You can see the building there. It was designed in 2001, about 12,500 square feet. It has about 94 parking spaces at the moment, and when this building was designed, it was always intended that an addition would be built off to the far right there. That was always anticipated with the original design. The proposed site plan builds in that area. As Joanne said, it's about a 4,100-square-foot addition on two floors. We're creating a small secondary entry at the addition, and we've maximized the building layout here to maximize the site. The parking is going to be increased by just a few spaces. We're adding four spaces and restriping several to get a total parking count of about 100. Previously, we had 94. The existing memorial garden and plaque that's located in the location where the addition is will be relocated just to the right of the addition. This is the proposed first-floor plan. I just want to quickly point out that the dotted line indicates the existing building. The area in green is the renovation portion of the project, and the area in blue is the new construction. So if we take a closer look at the floor plan, we are doing some renovation where the existing... Does this have a pointer in it? We're adding three small offices to where the existing fitness room is. We're also renovating the area of the existing respite room to create a meeting space and a staff lunch area, adding storage in that area and adding a unisex toilet room as well. Does this have a pointer? Anyone know? Does it? So this is the renovation area of the fitness area, three small offices, lunch area, storage, unisex lavatory. Putting a new vestibule in here, a new corridor that goes along here that connects to the existing corridor, a new fitness room, a new supportive day program on the end, a classroom and respite area, a nurse area, and a shine counselor, and then some storage over here. This is an interior view of the new fitness room, which will have mirrors on the far wall and a valet bar, acoustical ceiling, and a woodlook plank, vinyl plank floor. This is one of the areas where we looked closely at making sure that we were providing value for the design. We originally proposed a wood floor in this space. The committee asked us to find something that was comparable but a little bit less expensive, so we found this vinyl plank woodlook flooring with an underlayment that could provide a cushion for people that were working out in it. So just want to point out that the committee was constantly looking at ways to save money on all aspects of the design. The supportive day program will be at the corner and right adjacent to the existing patio. There'll be a small kitchenette in that space with a new stove and hood, refrigerator, and counter-type seating for arts and crafts, an accessible sink, and it also has that vinyl woodlook flooring as well. Adjacent to that space is the new classroom, which can also be a swing space to the supportive day program. Primarily designed as a classroom, but it can function as an exercise room as well with multiple seating layouts, both with desks or for meeting space. This room also has direct access to the outdoors. And then we also have some smaller rooms, like the nurse and shine counselor's office, which is located right here. There'll be advice there for health insurance, health screening, and tax advisors as well. On the second floor is one large room, a classroom that can be used for multiple different functions. It can seat about 50 people, at desks, or more people in a lecture-type situation, and it's just one large room on the second floor, and it also has access to a new deck on the back side. That deck would have been a flat roof, so we decided to take advantage of that space and turn it into an outdoor area. That's a view of the classroom on the second floor. This is a section just showing how the relative rooms work when they're stacked up on each other. You can see, as you come into the building, the new vestibule over here, the fitness gym, fitness area, the nurse's office, and then the classroom on the second floor is the classroom and the outdoor deck. These are the elevations of all three sides. We wanted to make sure that we designed the building so that it was very sympathetic to the existing building, gray shingles, similar pitched roof lines, similar window proportions, and sort of trying to downplay the secondary entry so that the... Whoops. So that the focus remains on the main entrance, which is over here. And here's the addition. It's an exterior view of the main entry, the addition being right over here. So we tried to create a similar-style gable that's on this end to sort of bookend the two, create a wraparound porch on three sides, similar to what's there already. A view from the side, you can see the memorial garden is on the left where we've moved it, and we have some screening for the condenser units that'll be located where those bushes are. And we're maintaining, again, the same dormer roof lines. This is existing, and then the new portion starts over here. And another view of the backside. The anticipated schedule, as you see here, is approval today, and then next week, contractor selection, groundbreaking on July 1st. We anticipate a six-to-eight-month construction period, and final completion sometime around the spring of 2019. We plan to keep the center open during construction as well.
Thank you so much for enjoying our slideshow and our presentation and our vision for the future. Duxbury is a community that cares about its residents of all ages. This building is used by the whole town, and we hope you will vote yes on Article 17. Thank you.
Before we open this up to general debate and questions, does the Finance Committee, Financial Capital Budget Committee have an opinion they'd like to express?
So I'm the new person on the committee, and so I've been given the ambivalent task of explaining the Finance Committee vote on this subject, and it wasn't an easy vote. We first got to hear the information about the plan proposal, expansion, and the cost on Thursday night, and we voted once, and we thought about it some more, and we opened it up for another revote this morning, and our final vote was, a committee of nine, we voted six in favor and three against. Okay? And the six in favor, Joanne is an admirable job, we're explaining the six in favor and the reasoning for that. The three against, it was, let me make it clear, is that all members of the Finance Committee are supportive of the senior center. All right? We appreciate the good work that it brings to the community. We appreciate the dedication of the staff, and that's so ably run the senior center. So the no vote, that three no vote, is not a vote against the expansion. It's a no vote against the timing of the expansion and the funds that were required to build that extension. So bottom line is, we do have a choice whether to spend that money or not. All right? And we're suggesting, the three votes was against, we're suggesting a temporary hold until we better understand some of the expenditures that we have upcoming, though we're not too, quite too sure what they're going to cost, all right, under the levy limit, which is out there. So the seawall remediation just happened, and we don't know how much that's going to cost. Powderpoint Bridge remediation, we're just getting the figures in, and we're not still too clear how much it's going to cost. And finally, there's one bit in there which we voted to abstain, and that's the one pending collective bargaining agreement that's out there, and we're not sure yet how much it's going to cost. So that was the reasoning behind it. It's, we have a choice today. We, you know, we have some figures that we know, the $2.6 million now for the senior center expansion, but we also have a little bit of unknown expense out there. And so, again, from an aspect or point of view of fiscal prudence, that's the reasoning behind the vote. Thank you.
Now we'll hear from the Fiscal Advisory Committee.
Good afternoon. Dave Matthews, 86 St. George Street, Fiscal Advisory Board. We went through the same presentation Thursday night. It was a joint presentation with the Finance Committee, and the Fiscal Advisory Board voted 3-2 against the project. It has nothing to do with the merits of the project, but as Fernando explained, it is the expenses that we see coming down the pike. Alex gave a presentation earlier today where, you know, the slides say what keeps us up at night. We have some very, very serious expenses coming at the town, and we are very, very concerned about how that's going to get funded. Again, it has nothing to do with the merits of the project. We absolutely love the senior center. We're very impressed with Joanne and the building committee team, the architect, the work that's been done. We have great respect for the Council on Aging as well. We're just very, very concerned about how this is going to get funded going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I mention a little bit about revenue? I mentioned briefly in our slide that most of our programs are fee-for-service. On an average, what we're expecting this year in revenue in our revolving account is about $130,000. We believe this expansion will enable us to expand our programming even further, and as we mentioned, the senior population is growing. Last year, people, the number of swipes through our front door from eight to four was 41,000. We know that will continue to grow because of the quality of program we offer, so we anticipate roughly or up to another 20% over 130, so we could imagine another 25,000 in revenue.
All right. We'll now open this up to general questions, and I suspect Mrs. McNabb has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions. Sorry, I was still taking notes. Regarding the cost of the expansion, is there any thought given to increasing the costs for out-of-town residents? I would hate to see the very residents that are funding an expansion then be charged more to participate in the programming. It seems to me that the people that will benefit from our expansion from other towns could incur some of the cost of the expansion, because I am assuming in that comment that the revenues that you just spoke of, the 130,000 in revenues, really just goes to cover the operating costs of those programs. So what I'm trying to get to is how can we help fund some of the cost of the expansion by out-of-town folks?
So we serve about 10,000 meals a year. Anyone who comes from out-of-town does pay an additional fee for the luxury of coming to...
to lunch at the senior center. Our café meals are up. That provides a very easy, quick-to-order meal, so that's something that's a different fee. What we find is the people who have moved out of town, say they moved down to the mobile estates right across the line, they're Duxbury residents at heart. They grew, they lived here their whole lives, they just couldn't find a smaller house to live in, but this is their home. So I, you know, I would say at other senior centers, you have maybe 10% of people coming from other towns, but basically it's Duxbury residents. I hope that answers your question.
Again, the question's more trying to recoup some of the cost of the actual expansion, the $2.5 million that we're being asked to fund here, not just the money in revenue that's coming in to cover the meals and the specific programs. Certainly, I, we love the senior center. My mother-in-law is there all the time. But, you know, just as the very people that you just spoke of that can't maybe find the small house, you know, you've got a population in this town that's struggling to stay in this town because we can't afford the taxes. So I think, you know, I'm trying to just, you know, and I, there's been so much talk at this town meeting, and I so appreciate the fact that our Finance Committee is so conservative. I know sometimes those positions are not popular, as we saw earlier today, but I, as a resident and a voter, I so appreciate that conservative approach, 'cause I would like to be able to stay in town, but I, in all honesty, it gets tougher every year.
Well, I think we understand the question. Does anybody have anything else to add? Mr. Brogner?
Paul Brogner, 21 Village Way. I'm an engineer and a member of the Building Committee, and I was also on the Building Committee 20 years ago when we started designing and constructing this facility. But I'm also a member of the Friends of the Council, and we are the funds generating organization for the Council on Aging. We raise money, we authorize the expenditure of these funds. 20 years ago, 19 years ago, when we constructed this facility, it was the Friends of the Council at that time that raised tens of thousands of dollars to furnish the facility that we have now. We have the Ellison Room, the Wyethouzer Room, the Walker Room, recently the McCluskey Room. Quite frankly, we have a couple more rooms that could have a name. When we build this building, we have the same authorization to utilize Friends' money or to fundraise for additional funds. For many of us in town, twice a year, we have the half marathon, two weeks before the Boston Marathon, and we have a tennis fundraising at the Kingsbury Club. We have raised tens of thousands of dollars for this purpose already. If you look back at the motion that Mrs. Sullivan discussed a few minutes ago, it gives the town manager the authority to accept gifts. It also authorizes the Board of Selectmen to accept the money in the gifts. So there is a legal avenue for us to follow to assist in the construction and furnishing of this project. We look forward to it. We would respectfully request your support, and quite frankly, we have a number of taxpayers in town that have voiced their support of this project. We have a couple individuals I think are in the audience right now that are willing to support this project. But if you're in their position, we need your vote today before they say yes tonight and tomorrow morning.
Thank you, Mr. Brogner.
We need your help, we respect it, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brogner. I just want to make sure I got the answer correct. So the answer is that you'll, there is some funding from the Friends of the Council on Aging.
The Friends in the last building project covered the cost of all the furnishings, and I think that's their goal for this project as well.
Okay, so, but the $2.5 million that's required to do the actual construction, it factors that in already or not? The cost of the furniture?
The furnishings are, is outside of that.
It's outside of that. Thank you.
Okay. Gentleman down in the very front, then we'll...
Thinking about this town meeting, I got thinking about somebody who was very active in town meeting 40, 45, 50 years ago, which those of you who were around then would remember as a legend in Duxbury. And I speak of Walter Prince. Walter Prince was famous for a number of things. He owned a Pontiac dealership on St. George Street, which many of you probably know as the St. George Street Garage. He was the quintessential Yankee. He was a man of very few words. He was frugal in all ways. He didn't like to spend money, especially town money. He was a regular attendee at town meetings. He would have been great for the demolition review, folks, because Walter Prince probably moved, I don't know, a couple of score houses and other buildings in Duxbury to avoid their demolition. Some he moved across the bay. He moved a church, and he also moved a denomination. Now that takes skill. He moved two buildings from Camp Edwards down the other side of the Cape Cod Canal to Bayside Marine, where they formed the office and store of Bayside for, I guess, a good 30 or 40 years, before Bayside had the good sense to buy that brick building on Washington Street. Well, Walter attended town meeting, and I don't know how old he was. I would say he had to be in his 90s. And he used to, this is when town meeting was in the gym, and he would sit about two-thirds of the way up on that side. And when somebody presented something or an article came up that he felt passionate about, he would get up and come down to the front to express his opinion. And at that point, he was probably like me, he kind of shuffled a bit, and it would take a while for him to get there. A hush would come over the audience. People knew that Walter's opinions were worth listening to. Walter had gravitas. But as I said, Walter was a man of few words. Typically, when he got to the podium, his words would be three, and they would either be, "I'm for it," or "I'm against it." Well, I'll tell you something, I think Walter would be for it in this case. If Walter had the opportunity to go over there on Mayflower Street and visit the senior center and see what those people do, then I'm going to offend some folks. But they take a bunch of grumpy old people, and they convert them. They convert them into being interested, interesting, active, excited, and I hasten to say youthful people.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna recognize the woman at the top of the stairs on my right, and then the gentleman down the bottom.
Hi, Ashley Sten, 347 Summer Street. I don't think I can beat that, but I do want to make the comment that I appreciate the checks and balances we have in our town as well, and that the Finance Committee is looking out for how we're spending our money. However, I think the senior center expansion project really speaks to long-term planning, and we, as a town, have been talking about the need for long-term planning and not constantly putting out fires at the last minute, quote-unquote. I think we've done a lot of that over the past several years, and that's why we've ended up with a lot of projects all at once. And given statistics and all the research to back the project, it really does make sense to go forward with it at this point, so that we're not in a situation in 2030, and we have seniors who, like he was just talking about, are lonely at home, have no place to go, or activities are full and they can't be accepted into them, and people are on wait lists. So I think we do need to think about the long-term planning of this whole project, and now does sound like it's a good time to go ahead with the project. I also wanted to speak about one of the programs that the senior center offers, which is the Respite Program. And as a volunteer, I take my therapy dog, and we visit on a regular basis, and it's just important for everyone to know what a very positive impact this program has on its members and the families. It's something that Duxbury should be very proud of. The Respite Program provides structured activities. They're engaging, they're interesting, and it's a nice structured setting for people with early-stage Alzheimer's and related forms of dementia. This program's very important to families dealing with these issues for two reasons. One, participants engage in many different activities. They have art projects, word games, field trips, they socialize with one another, they have movement and music, that's just to name a few, to keep their brains and bodies energized. And two, very, very important, caretakers can use this time to take care of their own health and well-being. When my dog and I enter the room, we are greeted with smiles and laughter by both the members and the staff. It is clear that each member of the program is happy and proud to be there, to be included in the good-hearted jokes and cajoling from the program manager, the assistants, and even each other. The atmosphere in that one room is so lighthearted and stimulating, stimu, and, yes, and I'm always very impressed with how the program manager draws out even the quietest member with all she knows and understands about each one. This program is one of a kind, which Duxbury, again, should be very proud of. And with further projected senior population growth, it's a program that will benefit from additional needed space and more conveniently-located restrooms that the proposed expansion will provide. So I say please support Article 17. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna recognize the gentleman on the right-hand side in the lower level, and then we have somebody who's patiently waiting on the upper deck on my left.
My name, excuse me, my name is Fred Von Bargen, 62 Toby Garden Street. I'm one of the 309 volunteers that performed various functions at the senior center. I'm lucky in that for the last quite a number of years, I've been able to be at the front desk. Sit being at the desk, you see everything that goes on, people coming in, people going out. You're also the recipient of questions, be they come on the phone. I'm getting more and more calls from people saying, "I'd like to know more information. I want to be a member of the senior center." I get calls from out-of-town, where people saying that my parents live there, we'd like to get them involved, what do you have, what programs are available? The thing is, more and more people are coming every single day. The trouble is, the existing facilities are very constricted for many of the activities we want to perform. We have exercise yoga classes that, when they put their mats down, it reminds me of Coney Island on Mart, on July 4th. Or for you local people, the Espinade on July 4th. There are many people who want to be here, they get so much enjoyment, knowledge, and education. The seniors of today are not the seniors of previous years. We are not built-in babysitters. We love our grandchildren, but call before you come. So all I'm asking is that, look at this project, look at the people who it helps, look at all the voters that it helps, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. I wonder... Gentleman on the upper left.
Mark Berry, Marshall Street. First, I support the project. I think it's a great asset to the town. My question is, is the appropriation based on construction bids that you have in hand?
Do we have an answer?
Yes.
The answer's yes. A woman over here on the right on the lower level, my right on the lower level.
Pamela Webster Walsh, 70 Humphreys Lane. I have a strong affection for senior centers, and the first one I encountered was in Dennis, Massachusetts, and I was the first event there when I got married 38 years ago. Then my mother came to live with me in 1998, before we had the wonderful senior center we have now. And for the 10 years that she lived with me, she went through a gradual state of decline with dementia, and I had to drive her to Silver Lake, where they had an adult day program. That closed, and then for a while I had to have her on the senior bus to Hingham. This kind of service that was not offered in Duxbury was really, really needed. It's very, very hard when you get to this point, either yourself, I'm hoping I don't get there, but when you have to care for someone that you love and invest that kind of time in driving to and from or subject them to bus trips that they don't understand, it's really important to have those services available in your own hometown if possible. And I think the senior center provides wonderful programs for many people, but this expansion offers more opportunity for those of us who are caring for elderly parents and for the kinds of classes and programs that are offered through the senior center. I think it's not gonna get cheaper to build it later. I think it makes sense to step up and do it now. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm wondering if we haven't worked our way up to having a vote on this? How do we feel? Yeah, okay. So let's have, we're gonna, we're gonna go for a vote on this. Article 17 involves borrowing. We will need a two-thirds vote in order for this to pass. So I'm gonna call for vote at this point. If you vote yes, it's in favor of this. If you vote no, you're opposed to it. Motion passes overwhelmingly, 290 to 68.
Thank you so much.
I realize that it is now 5 o'clock. I have a request for my deputy assessor to deal with one more article, Article 18.
We have a people on the line. So seniors don't leave. We want a revote on that last article.
I'm sorry, I think somebody wants to make a motion for reconsideration. I need you to step up to the, I need you to step up to a microphone and identify yourself.
My name is Alden Requist, 394 Bay Road. I ask all seniors to stay here and do, let's do a revote on that last article.
As I understand it, you'd like to, you'd like to have reconsideration on this article. Is that accurate? Is that accurate?
Yes.
Yes, that's what I thought. And the reason is?
It's a revote, so it can't be voted again.
Okay. I think we all know what, I think we've been through this just a little while ago. If, in fact, you'd like to talk about this all over again, you want to vote yes. If, in fact, you're happy with the way things turned out and you have no interest in talking about this again, you want to vote no. I think we, are there any questions? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and ask for a vote. When the green light comes on, yes, if you're interested in doing this again, no, if you've heard enough and happy how it turned out. Apparently, people are happy with the way it turned out. It was, the yes vote was 34, the no vote was 297. I wonder if we could deal with Article 18 as the very last item, and then we'll talk about perhaps moving to Monday?
Okay. I move that the town transfer from overlay surplus, the sum of $40,000, to be expended under the direction of the town manager for the purpose of defending the town's valuation of the residential component of the Island Creek Development Project.
Second.
This is the Island Creek housing, not the properties that we were discussing earlier today.
Are there any questions? Any concerns? I suspect we may actually be ready for a vote on this then. I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask for a vote on Article 18. If you're in favor of it, please press 1. If you're opposed, please press no. I'm sorry, we have a question. We hadn't quite called the vote yet. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Susan Taylor. I live at 32 Tremont Street, also known as the Bodie Building. My husband was a, lived in Duxbury for almost 90 years. I've been here for over 40 years, but the town just became too expensive for us to stay until the Bodie Building, which, as I understand, it was a 40B building, a 40B project. We moved into this building a year ago with a one-year lease, which protected the amount of rent that we had to pay. And my question is, if the value of the building is increased, does this mean that our rents also can be increased because there are no longer any leases? It has become a tenant-and-will building?
Does somebody have an answer?
I don't believe we can speak for the owner of the complex as far as what his plans for rental are. His expenses would increase, but I can't, we can't speak to that. I'm sorry.
I just want to know if this article would affect it.
We, I can't answer you. The rents are determined by the owner of the project, not by the town.
Even though it's a 40B building?
That's correct.
That is correct. Thank you.
Okay.
Hello?
Yes.
Over here. I'm sorry. I just, I'm not clear what the $40,000 is for.
And I believe we can get an answer for you.
Thank you.
The article, Steve Dunn, Director of Assessing, the article is to provide the Board of Assessors with the necessary funds to hire valuation and appraisal experts to defend the value at the Appellate Tax Board.
So, obviously, the owners of the building are looking, are seeking an abatement, so...
Right. They filed an abatement and filed at the Appellate Tax Board for FY '17. They also filed for an abatement for FY '18. They may go to ATB on that year, which is typical of a large value of that nature, that they would file for preceding years until a decision is rendered. But these funds will actually provide the Board with the necessary money to hire an expert appraiser on an affordable complex, and also hire necessary legal individuals to present this case to the Appellate Tax Board.
How much are they paying in taxes currently? How much of a reduction are they looking for?
I haven't really got that from them yet. I just met with their attorney for the second time just last week. He claimed he was going to be sending me some information, which I've yet to receive.
So, this $40,000, is this a one-time $40,000?
Yes, this is a one-time because once we defend it at ATB, and whatever decision is rendered at that point, we go forward with that value.
For what length of period?
Could be the next 10 years before they decide to file on us.
So, could they decide to file again next year?
That's everyone's right, every year.
So, it's, it could be, I mean, Beacon Properties is a large entity. You're well aware of that.
That's correct. Generally, what would happen is if they filed for '17 and '18, we'd probably be in court next spring in, say, March of '19. They would still file on '19, but they wouldn't be hearing that year at that particular trial because we might not have information that would be readily available to both sides. But then, depending upon the decision that came out for '17 and '18, would almost render the '19 move if the town was to win.
All right. So, I'm sorry, I'm just asking. I'm just trying to understand the process.
Yeah, I just never expected to get this many questions on.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
She should be cut and dried.
So, we have the money to figure out what the value of the building is, and then you mentioned the possibility of going to court next year.
Correct.
So, potential legal fees might be how much?
No, that's all built into that. That's assuming appraisal fees, that's hiring a lawyer, and court time.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions? Seeing no additional questions, I'm going to call for a vote.
Okay.
One for yes, two for no.
All right.
It's now 10 past 5. We've come to a sensible place to stop. I would ask, I'd ask for motion to recess until Monday.
Motion to adjourn.
At 7:00 p.m. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. See you Monday night at 7:00 p.m.